Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our regular town council meeting. Tonight is Monday, May 1st, 2023 at 7:00 p.m. We'll begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance, and I will ask Councilwoman Maranti to please lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight, we have a very special guest in attendance, who I will ask to come to the podium in a few moments. We have Pedro Soto, who is here this evening with us. He is the president and CEO of High Grade Precision Technologies. And High Grade has recently been named the 2023 Small Business Administration Manufacturer of the Year. That's quite an honor. And I was at a small reception on Friday. Senator Blumenthal was there, along with some other folks from Economic Development in the state of Connecticut. We had a little bit of chat with Pedro and some of his folks, and we had a tour of his facility, which is an absolutely fascinating place. They do a lot of work with the aerospace industry. They actually also do some very specialized work for Callaway golf balls. Did I get that right, Pedro? Yeah? It's incredibly interesting. And this is a small business that's in Plainville. And Pedro began in 2019, I think. Is that what? Okay. And we're very happy he's here tonight. And I'm going to read a proclamation for Pedro, and then I'm going to ask him to come to our podium and just say a few words, because this is a very, very prestigious honor. And we're very happy you could be here tonight, Pedro, and have the town council recognize you in full. So, High Grade Precision Technologies LLC, 2023 Small Business Administration Manufacturer of the Year. Whereas High Grade Precision Technologies LLC is a small business that has been in operation since 1962. And whereas High Grade is a world-class provider of high-precision machining and finishing services. And whereas in 2019, Pedro Soto acquired High Grade Precision Technologies, expanding the business and quality division, becoming a single-source metal finisher. And whereas entrepreneurs play an integral role in powering our nation's economy while navigating challenges such as COVID, supply chain disruptions, and inflation, demonstrating their resilience and flexibility. And whereas the 2023 National Small Business Week is April 30th through May 6, 2023. And whereas the U.S. Small Business Administration has celebrated National Small Business Week for more than 50 years, recognizing the contributions and innovations of America's entrepreneurs. Whereas High Grade Precision Technologies has been selected by the Small Business Administration of Connecticut as the Manufacturer of the Year. Now, therefore, be it resolved, we, the Plainville Town Council, extend our sincerest congratulations to President and CEO Pedro Soto and the High Grade Precision Technologies team on their award and recognize their excellence and success during challenging economic times and being named Manufacturer of the Year. This is dated at Plainville, Connecticut, on this first day of May, 2023. It is signed by the Plainville Town Council, myself, David Underwood, Vice Chairman, Joseph Cottenzaro, Rosemary Maranti, Jacob Rocco, Deborah Tompkins, and Christopher Wazarko. So, congratulations again, Pedro. And if you would please come up.
Great. Thank you. I'll try to aim towards everyone. But this is really, truly, an honor to receive this from the town of Plainville. And as I always say, I'm just the guy accepting the award. It's really, High Grade is about 26, soon to be 27 people. I think about seven of our employees live in Plainville. And everyone, except for just a few people, live in the surrounding town. So, this is really a fantastic area for precision manufacturing, especially with aerospace. And so, I'm always an advocate for that. And the town of Plainville should be proud of how many other manufacturers there are in the city. This is a really fantastic place to be located for one of the biggest industries in Connecticut. And so, I really, I thank the town, and I thank, really, everyone at High Grade who makes this possible. As I mentioned in our tour, High Grade really does play a pretty pivotal role in the supply chain in everything from golf balls to jet engines to parts in nuclear facilities to submarines. It's really, we really touch a lot of parts. And so, the town should be proud that this chat, that High Grade has been here since 1962. And I'm the guy currently taking care of it. And it was John Salsi Jr. and Senior are the two gentlemen who led it before I did. So, I know the agenda is very packed. So, I just want to say again, thank you very much. It was great to meet everyone as well. COVID's kind of put a damper on trying to reach people in the last few years. So, I really hope to do some more outreach and be more active in the town. And again, I thank everyone, and I hope to have a great meeting. Thank you.
Congratulations again, Pedro. And thank you for coming tonight. Okay. It's always, it's always fun for the council to be able to hear from people such as Pedro and learn a little bit more about what's happening in Plainville in terms of manufacturing and businesses that are thriving and doing a lot of great work. So, I had a tour, as I said, and it was just remarkable, remarkable. So, congratulations again, Pedro, and thank you for coming tonight. Okay. We're going to be moving on with our, the rest of our agenda. The next item of business is we have a public hearing. And I will ask the town clerk to read the notice of the public hearing, please.
Thank you. Notice is hereby given that the Plainville Town Council will hold public hearings at 7:00 p.m. on Monday, May 1st, 2023, in the council chambers of the municipal center in Plainville to hear public comments regarding: One, Proposals for the 2023 Neighborhood Assistance Act; and Two, Proposed Amendments to Ordinance Chapter 355, Taxation, Article 12, Provisions on the Collection of Revenue, Subsection 355-60, Waiver of Nominal Taxes; and Subsection 355-61, Refund of Nominal Balances, dated at Plainville, Connecticut, this 27th day of April, 2023.
Thank you for that. Town manager, if you would like to just give us a very brief few details on some of these items that we're offering for a public hearing tonight, we'd appreciate that.
Sure. Thank you. We have two applications under the Neighborhood Assistance Act, the first of which is Prudence Crandall Center of New Britain applying. And the center appeals directly and supports emergency shelter, supportive housing, counseling, and advocacy service for victims of domestic violence and their families. So, they have requested an application, or they put forth an application for $150,000 under the Neighborhood Assistance Act program. And our second entry is the Chrysalis Center Incorporated from Hartford and their, their energy conservation project to improve safety, security, and quality of life for their participants. Specifically, in Plainville, the St. Philip House connects eight one-bedroom units and offers participants doorway to a better life. And there's more, obviously, in detail to those applications. But this is a process by which we will take their application, hear public comment, and then forward off to the state for processing. So, there's the two items under the Neighborhood Assistance Act. And then additionally, we have opened for proposed amendments to the tax ordinance, one, the waiver on nominal fees, and two, refund of nominal balances.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the explanation. At this time, I will open up the public hearing for item number one, 2023 Neighborhood Assistance Act. If anybody wishes to speak to that public hearing, please come to the podium and state your name and address. Does anybody wish to speak to that public hearing? Anybody wish to speak to the public hearing? One more time. I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Item number two, Proposed Amendments to Taxation Ordinance. There's two items, waiver of nominal taxes and refund of nom, refund. My, my, my mistake. Boy, it's not going to work tonight. Refund of nominal balances. Does anybody wish to speak to that? Please come to the podium and state your name and address. Anybody wish to speak to item number two, Proposed Amendments to Taxation Ordinance? Last time? No? Okay. I will close that public hearing. And moving on, I have number three minutes of the previous meeting. May I have a motion to approve?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to approve the minutes of April 17th, 2023 regular meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Under announcements and reports, we have the proclamation of National Small Business Week, which I read. And so, we've already, so long, Pedro. So, we've already spoken about that. So, we're going to move along. Appointments and resignations. We have a few appointments, I think, and resignations here. So, item number one, Economic Development Agency.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to accept with regret the resignation of Joseph Klopaki from the Economic Development Agency.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Do we have any more? We have Inland Wetlands.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to accept with regret the resignation of David Garuski from the Inland Wetlands Commission.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Are there any other appointments or reappointments that are not on the agenda? Okay. Item number seven, Report of the Town Attorney. I think we have a report tonight.
Well, Madam Chair, I can surely comment on the town manager's report, item one. Other than that, I don't have any reports on.
Okay. We'll wait to go through that. And if we have questions, we can certainly ask at that point. Thank you. Okay. Report of the town manager. Michael?
Yes, thank you. I actually thought we might have a comment under public hearing. And I just wanted to make a point of order that Sarah is, is here, should the council have any questions about the, either the Act, the Neighborhood Assistance Act, well, not the Neighborhood Assistance, either of the two tax ordinances.
Okay.
And so, again, I don't know if there are any questions, but she's here. And rather than hold her to the entire meeting till the end, we could throw out a question if you, if you had to. But it sounds like it's pretty, I think it's pretty straightforward. And hopefully, there are no big debates. But she is here.
Does anybody have any questions you'd like to put forward? No? Okay. I think we're good.
Okay.
Thanks for coming tonight, though.
My first item, item number one, is just, well, is the middle school Plainville update. And we had originally talked about a workshop or work session for tonight. And I think, in my recollection, a lot focused on, on the third potential option with respect to closing the middle school. And in previous discussions, conversations, that item had come up. And, you know, the issue later on in the agenda is the question about authority and getting a legal opinion. So, I think that kind of, you know, put things on hold. But we discussed, you know, the possibility of having a work session to discuss an RFP for a consultant looking at the third option for the closure of the middle school and/or consolidation. And so, with that question outstanding, you know, we sort of hit the pause button, waiting for that process to unfold. So, superintendent had sought a legal opinion and that their legal firm has conflicted out and had to speak with our legal counsel. And, and that question is going to be before the council under new business. And I think at this point, I'll just pause. We could take up what town attorney would like to say, or we can hold that comment. I can go through my report, and we could save it for the actual new business item. It's pleasure of the chair, however you want to.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for our town attorney regarding, there is a conflict of interest that was raised?
It would require the council to waive the conflict in order to allow the superintendent to instruct the town, their attorney to proceed with the legal opinion, so.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions about this?
I just, just, has anything changed since we talked about it last week?
No, but I think if, if Jake wanted to go through, so you understand, you know, a sense of the conflict and that it isn't anything, well, I won't speak, but let Jake speak, that it's not something significant that would be, I think, for the council to waive, but.
Sure. Attorney Bill Rock, as the council may be aware, is involved with the town with the M&R.
Is your mic on? Thank you.
Sorry about that. As the council may be aware, Bill Rock, Attorney Bill Rock, is employed with Shipman and Goodwin. He's worked on behalf of the town for some period of time with the M&R property. Attorney Mooney is also a employee of Shipman and Goodwin. And that creates a potential conflict for Shipman and Goodwin to provide a legal opinion to the Board of Ed. And speaking and with Attorney Mastriani, council should know Attorney Mooney is, is considered one of the premier Connecticut experts in education law. And so, getting an opinion from him would, would be more than reasonable. To do that, though, the town would have to waive that conflict that was created. I'm sure there will be some type of document that, that we would have to sign for Shipman and Goodwin in order for Attorney Mooney to give an opinion on this issue, so.
So, at this point, Attorney Rock has completed his work for the town. He is no longer engaged in doing any work for the town? Is that my understanding, that he, he's finished with the task that he was working toward?
I, I think he's, he may still be involved, Madam Chair. I know there are ongoing meetings with respect to that redevelopment project, and he may very well be involved in giving some type of advisory council from time to time. But I'm not quite sure if he's still doing that.
Well, I, I don't, I don't think this is an issue where we need to, need to stand on this conflict of interest. Clearly, they both have very, very different duties and responsibilities and obligations in the work that they did. And I don't see, I don't see any reason why we should not waive the, you know, the conflict of interest. But I would like to hear from the rest of the council if they're in agreement with that. And if you have any other questions for our town attorney, this would be a good time to ask them.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm going to agree with it.
To waive it?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody else all right with this?
Yes.
Okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the explanation.
You're welcome.
All right.
Great. That'll be an item we take up under new business. My second item is update on the Tomaso Nature Park and the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail update. At the last meeting, I spoke about a second area of modifications, excuse me, involving the nature parks, specifically about the impact of the trail that runs inside the park fence using the existing pedestrian bridges and the established path. The design concept for the separation of the, the trail and the park are being laid out and designed. We're talking with the state about proposals around that and the access points and potentially fencing and landscaping and certain types of, of, you know, variety of species, but also in terms of split rail fence and so forth. We're getting into the details with the state. We're just starting that process now. But specific attention is focused on the impact of the trail will have on the turtle breeding habitats. That was a concern, or what we refer to as the turtle beds. And we're trying to move as quickly as we can because the mating season begins in May as the temperatures start to, to rise. And so, we're working, I've been working with Mark DeVoe and the former curator, Art Marino, to come up with a reasonable solution alternative to try and create two additional turtle beds outside and away from the path so that they'd have access without having to transverse or travel over the path and potentially get, you know, hit and killed with, you know, whoever's coming through, whatever might happen. But anyway, we're, we're going to focus on two beds. And Mark has already put forth an application through Inland Wetlands to have them take a look at that and look at different, specific areas. And I think I've supplied maps for you as well to take a look at that. And the, you know, the area and the vegetation is low enough where turtles can get out of the, either on the pond side or the swamp side and come through the pedestrian bridge and through that and get access without having to, for us to either build a culvert or tunnel and without them having to go over on top. So, we think we've worked out a pretty good solution, and it'll be subject to review. I believe they're going to meet this week. I'll check with Mark. But I think the application is ready for review. And hopefully, as a item that is, you know, hopefully permitted and a non-regulated use. So, we're hoping positively that they'll look at it favorably and approve that. So, I can report back at the next, next meeting on that. But I also, in addition to just the rail alignment we had talked about, I think I'd mentioned, actually, this meeting having, or at some point in May, having a work session on the alignment itself. I refer to as the north-south alignment that has three different phases. And this particular phase is Phase Two. And to look at how Phase One is already where they are and that schedule, where Phase Two is. And of course, the most difficult piece, Phase Three, where that all fits together as we, as we're leading up to a public informational meeting July 20th for Phase Two. So, I thought it might be helpful in a quick, you know, workshop, work session sometime before July. And again, with different competing interests, we'll figure, we'll figure that out. If that's something we can fit in for the May 15th, or we're going to use that for another work session on some other subject, topic, we can figure that out. But I, at some point, maybe, maybe in June, we can push that to June and have a little more additional information for you.
Okay.
My next item is item three, Robertson Airport Project Updates. There's been a lot going on there. There is a lot going on there. And so, the Aviation Commission has been working on three important capital projects. The AWOS POPPI Segmented Circle and Wind Cone Installation, which is pretty interesting. The fencing project and the small roof replacement for the administration office. So, the Automated Weather Observing System, the AWOS, is a system that collects and reports the data about the airport weather conditions automatically and continuously in real time. So, that is underway as we speak. They are working on that. In addition, with that is the Precision Approach Path Indicator, the POPPI project, which is basically a set of lights positioned alongside the runway, which provide pilots with, with a visual indicator of their aircraft's position relative to the correct glide path for the runway. The Segmented Circle and Wind Cone are visual indicators that provide traffic pattern information to pilots at airports without a control tower. All of these components are expected to be completed by the end of June, hopefully. We don't see any, any, any roadblocks or any delays in, in those projects. The fence project will replace the existing perimeter fence facing outward from the runway toward Johnson Avenue. The fence bid was opened on Wednesday, April 26th, and the project will likely, likely start in the fall pending the FAA review. And we have some, we have some value engineering to do on the fence work. It was a bit higher than we expected in terms of the bid. So, there's, there's still some work done. But it was always originally scheduled for a fall installation, so we can get through the, so the review process. The small roof replacement as the administrative building, which is actually attached to the larger hangar, and that roof was done a few years ago. This is a smaller piece that we're going to be able to get done. Just heard today that the materials should be ready by May 24th, shipped out. We should have them by the first part of June and still try to hit that completion date for end of June, if not July, if we can. So, those, those projects running concurrently and, you know, a lot of activity there at the airport. In addition to that, we are looking at, I think at the last meeting was the, the beacon, which is above, which we were on a tour outside and noticed that it wasn't functioning correctly. So, we're going to have to take a look at that as well and add it into the, into the mix. But that's it on Robertson Airport. Item number four is an update, a quick update on Honor Heights, the sewer extension project. And we mentioned that what the council did was to approve the filing on the land records for the preliminary assessment. That is in the process of being wrapped up and, and recorded. The town attorney's office is also assisting in the review of the draft easement agreements, which involve three properties along the sewer extension that will need in order to extend the service. So, we're working with three entities there and getting those completed. And the town engineer has drafted a letter to notify homeowners that he'll be staking the lateral lines this week, starting Wednesday, I believe he's going to try and get out there. And that will help the homeowners understand with a stake in the ground to know where the lateral will be coming in. And Andy and I are going to join the engineer and try and facilitate any changes. Obviously, there may be situational when you get on the ground there and putting out the stake that you don't realize there might be a, might be a fence, or might be a favorite tree, there might be a pool, there might be a patio, there might be a whole bunch of things in relation. We're just looking at maps. So, once we get out and actually do the field layout and put the stake in, then the homeowner can see exactly as well. We'll start to work out any type of adjustments that we may need in the field with that. And it'll be an opportunity to try and reach some individual residents that may not have shown up for the meetings or participated in the meetings and have maybe unaware that this is moving forward. So, we'll do our best to communicate what we're doing. And again, that project is still on track for beginning in June and trying to wrap up by November of this year. And item five, my last item, Camp Street Development Project Update. This is more of an FYI. I'm not sure the community in general understands what the development is all about. But this is a, this is not a Plainville development. This is a town of Bristol development. But it's proposing 74 senior citizen apartments in property that accesses Camp Street. It does not have enough acreage to build. So, the application is not in Plainville. It is in Bristol. But the impact is Plainville in terms of there will be one entrance in and out, and all of the traffic will be coming onto Camp Street as proposed at this point. So, the hearing is still open and extended until May 8th for the planning and zoning board there. And we're having conversations and we'll hopefully have a sit down, well, we will have a sit down and conversation with the attorney representing the developer later this week to talk about the impact for Plainville. And I'm just using this opportunity as a platform to... as a platform to, to notify residents. And we've also done some social media posts just in case people are unaware. This is a development that is not, it's, it's a high-density development, so it's not insignificant. So I think people should be aware of that. And that's it. I'll pause for any questions before we move on to item six and happenings with Andy.
Anybody have any questions for the town manager and his report tonight?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Lozarko.
Quick question about the Camp Street development. As far as you know, and I think you said it, but I just want to make sure I heard it correctly, is that this development would only enter and exit off of Camp Street. There wouldn't be an exit and entrance off of French Street, I believe was the other side of the property?
Right.
As far as you, or if you could check that when you meet with the developer?
No, that is, that is the case.
That is.
What they proposed, and, and we put the renderings and the links to the proposal, that French Street is, I think, a viable option. Maybe not, but we want to hear why. To, to date, we have not heard a response back as to why French Street would not be...
Yeah. My bigger concern is that if, if they allow exit and entrance on both sides, that suddenly we're going to have a lot more traffic because there's a significant neighborhood in that area. So if they're allowed to come off of French Street right onto Camp Street, that would be a bigger concern for me, obviously.
Well, you mean, you mean adding to the 74...
Like people in that neighborhood would start using that access to Camp Street to exit the neighborhood as opposed to going back towards...
Yeah, that's a very good point. I had not even thought of that. I was just thinking in terms of the actual homeowners there, the 74 units plus, you know, I mean, to call it, you know, times two, it's 140 individuals living there potentially. Yeah, that's a good point.
And just the other, I do have a copy, you received part of the petition for the middle school to renovate like new petition. I'm gonna, this is the other half that's due to the council and the town manager. I'm gonna let the town clerk take control of it now and get us copies when we get a working copier. But that's all I have.
Okay. Any other questions for the town manager with his report tonight? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then it's...
Happenings.
Happenings.
We're not going to go away yet. Happenings.
Yeah, can't leave without the happenings. So I do have a few things to report to the council. The first is a press release and social media post were published today regarding household hazardous waste collection. Plainville residents can participate in the household hazardous waste collection at the Town of Berlin's Residential Recycling Center located at 642 Christian Lane in Berlin, Connecticut. On May 19th, 2023, that's a February, that's a Friday, from 2:30 PM to 6:30 PM, proof of residency is required. The next hazardous waste collection will be in November, and a list of acceptable items can be found on the Plainville Town website. From the fire company, the Plainville Fire Company is still encouraging people to sign up and volunteer at the balloon festival scheduled for the evening of Friday, August 25th, and all day on Saturday, August 26th. For more information and for a link to sign up, you can visit www.plainvillefireco.com. From the library and for all information on library programs, including how to register, you can either call the public library at 860-793-1446, or visit plainvillct.com/library. The first is the Plainville Schools Art Show from Friday, May 5th to Tuesday, May 23rd. Artists from Plainville Schools will have their work on display during library business hours for all to enjoy. Gizmo's Possum Storytelling Read Along is on Tuesday, May 9th from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM. This is hosted by the Youth Services Department and is a read along for children of ages five to 11. And it'll be a presentation to give youth the tools to care and how to help care for their own mental health. Families are encouraged to attend. Guests will be, also have the chance to meet Gizmo, a puppy, in person, and registration is required. The New Britain Symphony Orchestra Concert is on Wednesday, May 10th from 6:30 PM to 7:30 PM. The New Britain Symphony Orchestra presents the Beatles String Quartet, performing songs from the famous and iconic band. And you can visit the library's calendar to register. On Thursday, May 11th at 1:00 PM, the library will be hosting their monthly movie matinee. This month's movie is A Man Called Ove. No registration is needed. Online safety training is on Friday, May 12th at 11:00 AM. A reference librarian will be teaching participants about online safety. Registration is required. And from the Senior Center, for all information on Senior Center programs, you can call the Senior Center at 860-747-5728. And all programs are free and open to the public unless otherwise indicated. The first is the Healthy Body Series. This is on Tuesdays from 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM, weekly from now until May 30th. You can join Karen Pagliaro. She's a nurse in exploring healthy eating habits that can assist you in moving your body in a healthier direction. And you can share recipes and you can have guest speakers as well. Michaela's 4 o'clock plant sale will be on Monday through Thursday. That's May 8th, 9th, 10th, and 11th. Hours are from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And the benefits to the sale go to the Pettit Family Foundation and the Plainville Library. Caregiving Connections on Tuesday, May 9th at 10:00 AM. Connect with other caregivers at the Senior Center to support one another on their journeys to recognize the challenges and frustrations of 24/7 caregiving. A goat party will be held May 9th from 1:00 PM to 2:00 PM at Norton Park near the pavilions. This is open to members only, and the rain date is May 10th. And essentially, you can go pet, feed, and interact with goats. It's a fun experience with Got Your Goat from Washington Depot. Handwriting Analysis Class, also known as a grapho analysis, will be a workshop session starting on Wednesday, May 10th and going until June 28th. And these are from 1:30 PM to 3:00 PM. It's an eight-week course, and the cost is $24, and that includes materials. And the instructor is a certified grapho analyst and teaches participants to uncover the secrets hidden in your handwriting. You can unlock personality traits and characteristics and learn a little bit more about yourself, your handwriting. The Life and Times of Sidney Poeter, Thursday, May 11th, 2023 at 10:00 AM. This is presented by Joe Willett, the History Guy. He'll be at the Senior Center. Pet Day at the Senior Center is on Friday, May 12th from 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM. You could bring your pet for treats and a photo, and they'll be printing the photos, so you can take those home with you. The Breakfast Club is meeting on Tuesday, May 16th at 9:00 AM. And this is an informal breakfast located at a Plainville restaurant with a great group of friends, and you can order and you'll pay on your own. But if you're interested in joining, you can call the Senior Center to get an idea as to where the next meeting will be held. And the last is Grandparents Raising Grandchildren. This is on Tuesday, May 16th at 10:30 AM. And you can share resources, ideas, struggles, enjoys, more with others who are also raising grandchildren. And that is all I have for you.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Andy with his report for us tonight? Thank you for the information, as always. All right. Moving along, the next item of our agenda is the public comment section. During this time in our meeting, we welcome the public to come to the podium. Please state your name and address. You will be given one opportunity, three minutes to speak to the council. And if I may ask, there's, that you not have applause or calling out from the audience while the speakers are up here. It's respecting their time and respecting the time of the council, so I appreciate your thoughtfulness on that regard. I also, before we begin with that, I have some emails that were sent to the town council today. I am not going to read the entirety of them, although I will ask our town clerk to please include them in the official minutes of the meeting tonight. If anybody wishes to read them, they will be available, as are all our minutes. We received one from, these are all in favor of middle school renovation, as you probably could surmise. One is from Jessica Pernol. One is from Kristen Campbell. One is from Erica Graff. One is from Jennifer Chase. And the last is from Nora Mador. We just got these today. So these will be entered as official documents in our meeting tonight. If you ever have to go research the minutes, they will be in there. So they are available for your inspection. Okay, so right now, I will open up the public, the public comment section. As I said, please come to the podium, turn on the mic, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to speak. I am going to be fairly strict with the three-minute rule. You're going to hear one chime, which is going to tell you, you have 30 seconds left. And the second chime means your time has expired. In case everybody here wants to have an opportunity to speak, I'm going to be, I'm going to stick to that three minutes. So just be aware that I will tell you that it's time to wrap up your thoughts. Does anybody wish to speak? Please step up to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Alyssa Robinson. I've been a resident of Plainville for 15 years, and I'm the parent of a sixth-grade MSP student. I'm here to add to the many voices advocating for the town council to allow the residents of Plainville to vote for the middle school renovate like new project. Having a safe, modern, and comfortable environment is an essential tool for learning. I'm surprised and disappointed to hear that the council is considering using taxpayer dollars to investigate the possibility of consolidating our schools. Our town voted and worked to create modern, appropriate, and beautiful spaces in which our elementary students can learn and grow. These spaces were designed for the needs of those students. The citizens of Plainville have a right to participate in deciding if it is time to renovate the middle school of Plainville. If that project were to be voted down, certainly it would make sense to assess and reconsider what plan might suit our community's needs. But using taxpayer dollars to investigate a plan that a significant number of constituents are already opposed to is an injustice. We do not need to pay for a study to tell us that consolidating schools would lead to crowded classrooms and students learning in classrooms not designed for their specific needs. I hope the town council members will keep in mind their responsibility to their community, part of which is supporting our school's mission to inspire and prepare lifelong learners to follow their passion, engage in their communities, and positively impact our global society. Please let town residents have a say in this vital decision.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Please, please step up to the microphone. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Courtney Augustine Palmer. I live at 45 Matter Comet Road in Plainville. I have two children in the middle school of Plainville, one in eighth grade and one in sixth grade. And I just stand here before you to say, to support the renovation like new. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Hello. Martha Wydel, 25, Tyler Farms Road. Nope, I need my glasses. I am resident and educator in another district for the, for over 20 years and a parent to three, three children, two of whom are within the Plainville Schools. I have experienced the different talents and skills of seven superintendents because of my occupation and life in Plainville. Mr. LePage is by far the most impressive individual in this role and stands above the others. He is professional, caring, and approachable. He attends all school events like band concerts, choir performances, and the fifth grade graduation. He goes into our classrooms to read to our children and respond to parent, and responds to parent emails himself. He has moved our school district forward, and our district is better because of him. His dedication to the town and his supreme work ethic are remarkable. I realize that getting Mr. LePage to stay is not going to happen. As, and as disappointed as many of us are, we understand his decision to move on. We, who would want to work in such a toxic environment where the best interests of students are not made priority? I believe you have driven Mr. LePage out of our district, and I believe it's due to the fact that many members of the council are blocking Mr. Page from applying for the renovation like new grant for MSP. The town council is elected to represent the town. The issue should have gone to a town vote, and it did with, as, as it did with the other renovation projects. You have failed us, parents, dedicated teachers, current and future students of this town. You are not worried about Plainville students, but rather getting reelected in the fall. I pray that come November, people will remember the choices this council has made. The town council mentioned that the enrollment numbers have gone down. What do you think will happen now? People move into town for the quality of education, and our home and property values depend on the school system, not repaired sidewalks. Who is going to pay for the proposed consultants and the study to see if it's feasible to close and consolidate the schools? In my opinion, it is not practical, and the children and teachers of Plainville deserve better. As we move forward and select a new superintendent, sadly, I request that parents and teachers and those who have our children's best interests at heart be part of the hearing process, hiring process, and work alongside the Board of, Board of Education and Town Council. Mr. LePage, best of luck to you in your new endeavor. Your new school system is fortunate to have you. You will ensure their children will be ready for the future. Hopefully, you will work with professionals who support you and your vision, unlike the majority of this town council. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council.
Again, I'm asking you to withhold the applause. Thank you. Next?
My name is Lisa Lebec. I live at 190A Redstone Hill. Mr. LePage, I'm very sad to see you go. I'm a Plainville Community Schools graduate. I have a daughter who is class of 2006 and another who is class of 2021. She attended, both kids attended TOFLON, MSP, and PHS. My husband did not attend Plainville Schools. He was a private Catholic school student. We made sure we lived in Plainville because of the school system, the level of teachers, schools, technology, et cetera, that Plainville provides our students. During the pandemic, our superintendent, school administrators, teachers, support staff, all acted as if this was second nature. They pivoted our students and gave them as much normalcy that our education could provide during that terrible time in our lives. There were flaws, of course there were. We didn't expect this. It was expected. And when I would talk to friends from other towns, they wanted to know what we had that they didn't have. We had Mr. LePage and a great administration in our town. We have a school system that truly cares about our kids and their education. My youngest daughter, she's at a very specialized school. She's studying to be an aerospace engineer at Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University in Florida. She graduated PHS number eight in her class and entered college with many AP and ECE credits. She's with kids who have been exposed to more step, excuse me, and engineering-related classes in high school than she did. We need to provide our kids with more competitive skills, whether they're going to college or not. They need to be competitive. We can't achieve this by closing the middle school, merging elementary schools, overcrowding our classrooms, or losing valuable administrators and teachers. We should be promoting safe schools for our kids. We should be providing the best education by the best educators. We should not be told that our schools are not important, and that is what I feel our council is doing. Pretend for just one minute, your children or your grandchildren are students here in Plainville. What do you want for them? I know I don't want what you are proposing for anyone's child who goes to school in our town. This needs, this town needs to have a say. Why are you not willing to put this out to vote? This is a democracy and should not be manipulated by a few people. Mr. LePage, good luck. And thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Hi, I'm Kelly Maynard. Wait, is this on?
It's on. Yep. If you get a little closer, we can hear you a little bit better.
Hi, I'm Kelly Maynard and a resident of Plainville. I'm also a mom to two elementary-age children that attend school in this district. Thank you for allowing me the...
Can we have your address? I don't mean to interrupt.
Sorry, 141 Holly Berry Lane.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for allowing me the chance to speak tonight. I wrote this out, but still wasn't sure if I would actually speak here. I have a terrible fear of public speaking, so please bear with me as I try to kind of stumble my way through. As most people hear, I am here to speak about the state of the middle school and the controversy around applying for the grant to help renovate the school. Currently, the school is bordering, if not already there, on unsafe, a leaking roof that makes halls impassable at times of heavy rain, no safety vestibule in the front of the building, significant mold within the school, to name just a few of the issues. Passive neglect is a... Passive neglect is the failure by a caregiver to provide a person with the necessities of life, including but not limited to food, clothing, shelter, appropriate education, or medical care. This happens because of a failure to understand the person's needs, lack of awareness of services to help meet needs, or lack of capacity to care for the person. And I fear in this case, being so wrapped up in politics and ego, that our most precious commodity, the children of this town, are being neglected, neglected by those elected to serve them, advocate, and provide for them. Providing a safe and functional educational facility and environment is foundational in providing children with reasonable and achievable goals for success. Not doing so is neglect, flat out. Why are you up there in this role if you don't care about the most vulnerable of your community? As town council members, it is your job to listen and legislate for your, for your constituents. That does not mean just your peer group, but the town as a whole, the citizens from one day old to 100 years old. There is a petition with, I believe, well over 800 signatures. You've received dozens of emails and calls and have had record turnouts to your meetings, almost everyone with the same message: Allow for the application of the grant. I am so confused as to why this is even an issue. If you want to spend the money and tax dollars conducting a study about consolidating schools, go ahead. We can't stop you. But there is no reason why the grant paperwork cannot be submitted at the same time, if and only if we get approved for the grant. And some town will get approved for the grant. Those tax dollars are already allotted and spent. There can be a discussion, proposal, debate, and ultimately vote on how we should move forward. We are now losing Mr. LePage, which is terrifying. Who will speak for our kids going forward is a huge question. The Board of Education barely listens, and you don't seem to listen at all. If our school system tanks, then so do our home values. So if you don't care about children, for whatever reason, care about the value of your home. Let that matter at least. What you choose to do and who you choose to be, someone who will advocate or just play party line, is going to follow you. If you continue to sabotage attempts to provide safe learning environments for children, it will be your legacy within this town.
I'm going to ask you to wrap up. Your time has expired, as I said earlier. We have to do that for all the folks here.
One last thing. As the school continues to crumble and people speak of Plainville school system, your names will become synonymous with a neglect of kids. Don't be a politician right now. Just be a good person who isn't afraid of the right thing, even if it's hard or unpopular with your friends. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Amy Poured. I live at 17 Bradley Street. I didn't want to be here tonight. I wanted to be at the ball field, still celebrating my son's incredible win. But I got to tell you, superintendents like Stephen LePage are rare at best, so losing him is absolutely disappointing. And that's not even the right word for it. It's beyond that. The people who spoke before me, so eloquent and well thought out. I didn't plan this. They did a great job, but here's the thing. It's been years, and I don't think you're listening, so I don't know that I could come up here with any great-- I think you know the information. And I think at this point, you're wasting our money trying to do studies to actually find information to support your own choices, not what's best for our kids, not what's best for our school system, not what's best for our town. I have three children in this town. My husband grew up, went to school here. It shouldn't be like this. Again, disappointing doesn't even begin to start to describe it. Mr. LePage, you will be missed beyond words. And again, I don't feel like you guys are listening. I didn't want to come here. When we vote, we trust that you're going to do what your constituents request. We've made it clear. Couldn't be clearer. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Curtis, 15 Maiden Lane. I'm coming after many people who have said things quite beautifully and eloquently tonight. I just wanted to publicly thank Mr. LePage for everything he has done and to let him know how gutted I am that he has been forced to leave this town. I would agree with the previous speaker that there is a reason he's leaving, and it is this toxic environment that does not support education. We can come up here every time, I'm going to be at every meeting saying this to you. If you can't listen to the people, then what are you doing? I want to look at the numbers, just in terms of this meshing of schools. I looked up on USA Today. I don't know how up to date they are, but currently, according to USA Today, MSP has 530 students, whereas Linden has 342. So tell me the math. How are you going to put those kids in that space? And then, where are you going to put those 342 into Wheeler and Tofflon? Linden was designed to hold elementary students. It is not, are you going to renovate Linden now to fit middle school students, to put in the things that they need? Does that make sense? We have an opportunity, before Mr. LePage leaves, to apply for this grant, to let us vote on whether the town believes in renovate like new. I don't want to see any more of this delaying and distraction, which I feel is, is purposeful. And we need this man to do that before he goes, so that our town has the ability to do what's best for our children. Again, everyone else has said it much better than I this evening, but I hope, I hope that at some point, you will start to listen to what all of us are saying and do what is right for our town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Becky Tyrell, 174 West Main Street. And Catherine's right, everybody has spoken better, and so I'm really fortunate in that. I'm just reading a letter. These are not my words. These are the words of Cheryl Provost, 6 Overlook Drive. Sorry that I wasn't able to attend in person this evening. I've asked Becky to read these comments on my behalf. My comments are addressed to the majority members of the town council. I believe that you are still using that term, although your actions more suit a monarchy. The pictures on the wall outside the council chambers represent years of service by so many on behalf of the citizens of Plainville. These groups worked for the good of the town and its citizens. Sadly, this is no longer the case for the majority members on this council. The decision to apply for renovate like new funding comes from the superintendent of school, schools. This is the person with the qualifications to understand the requirements of our district and our building standards. The decision on whether or not monies, if awarded, should be used for renovate like new belongs to the voters of Plainville. You were 100% out of line last year to deny the superintendent the chance to apply and the voters the right to decide. You seem to be headed down the same path. Had we applied last year, when you should have, there would have been a vote. If approved, the work would have cost far less than it will now, and the notion of piecemeal repairs to the school with no state funding, with, with the costs to taxpayers is far more, will be far more with far less results. It's up to the voters to decide, and it's not your place to block their voice. Allow the superintendent to apply for state, state renovate like new status. Your behavior is hurting the town and the taxpayers. As someone looking at retirement, I cannot begin to express my anger over what your antics will cost us in property values. Strong schools are number one on the list for home buyers. What you have done over the last few years has cost us three outstanding superintendents, and now you are doing your best to reduce the value of our homes. We have the right people running our schools, and it's not you. Take a look at all those photos on the wall out there. Those were people dedicated to the service of this town. They were from different parties, had different views, but worked together for the betterment of Plainville. Stop hurting this community.
Hello, Margaret DeSenna, 122 Milford Street Extension in Plainville. I've been a resident for 16-plus years. I have a child at Linden Street School, and I'm extremely concerned with how the town is handling this renovation. To quote Ms. Morante's platform, "Our citizens deserve up-to-date infrastructure, strong public schools, and quality services." And that is what our children also deserve. And we can go on and on about the educational impact of closing a school and how this is negatively going to impact our children, how this is going to drive stellar staff away from our educational system. We can continue to talk about the mental health impacts that are happening and the email we received today, especially everything we're seeing with the COVID pandemic and what's happening and what's going to be happening in the next couple of years for our children. I'm a social worker that works with children and families. The impact is going to be great, and our schools are going to feel it in the next couple of years significantly. There's the financial benefits, as everyone said. We close the middle school and leave it empty here. We have an empty school, crime rates go up, as all the studies show in looking at closing schools. Our property values decrease around that area. Our, again, our educational leaders, our teachers leave for better school systems where they don't have 25, 30 kids in a classroom. In Linden, we have four classrooms for the third grade. What are we going to do? Have five, six? Or we're going to have 30 kids in a classroom? And my child has been affected this year, and I've only spoken up once. And, and since that date, it's been addressed appropriately, but that's because it can be addressed appropriately at this time. And not following through with updating the school, I'm appalled to hear what condition it's in. This is the town council's responsibility. The fact that it even got this far is appalling to me. And I agree with whomever said it before, that, that's straight neglect. Those are kids in there every day who are dealing with water falling on their head, who have mold, who have-- How did we ever let it be that our kids could be that way? People, our, our property taxes are going to go down, people are not going to move here, we will not get educators. We could, we'll, we'll end up being like New Britain, Hartford, East Windsor. Please keep Plainville alive and let us vote. Thank you.
Hello. Mike Larikson, 52 Metta Comet Road. Here to support putting the MSP renovation project to referendum vote. I agree with everyone before me that spoke. This project needs to go forward. When you start looking at the town in general, if you look at the history of this project, back, going back to 2019, originally, it was pushed back, minimized at your discretion. Again, once again, another opportunity was presented to us. Mr. LePage did a phenomenal job. 65% of this was going to get reimbursed back to the state. But again, by your decision, by four of your council members, proceeded not to let that go forward, which is extremely disappointing. As a parent of a child in the high school, as well the middle school, I feel it is our duty to be able to present them with the best opportunity for them to thrive. We are not doing that right now, and it's disappointing. It's disappointing because I voted for you four, and I will not do that again. Because-- When you look at--
Please don't interrupt our speakers. Please, I'm asking you again, do not interrupt the speaker. Please continue, sir.
We are talking about consolidating. Right now, Kerry is in the process of building 77 homes. If you go to their website, one of the things they present is the education system. They talk about how the Board of Education supports, how they've done recent renovations on this. But yet now, we have a council that is shutting that down completely. You have 77 families coming in here. Two children per household? Where are they going to go? Linden? Tofflon? Wheeler? Doesn't work. You cannot do the math. So in closing, again, I think I just need to bring this up. At the end of the day, we have, it's our duty to protect our children. And right now, we are not doing that from a health and safety standpoint. And it's your, it's your job. You were elected. You were elected by people like me. I voted Republican, and it is disappointing to find that the Republican group there didn't even let it go to a referendum vote. That is your right. You have to let it go forward to let us vote. My right to vote. It is my voice, not your voice. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Diane Sperry. I live at 21 Broad Street. I came here over 32 years ago to get my children a good education in Plainville. My children went to Plainville schools. They loved everything about them. They did a good job in teaching my children. I, I think it's deplorable that you're threatening to close the middle school. My grandchildren suffered at Linden when they had the, the Tofflon issue. And now, you're having these families not get the education that my children got? It's deplorable. I think it's only right that you go forward with the new renovation. And I think it's sad that Mr. LePage is gone. My granddaughter graduated here in Plainville High School, and she's upset about that. But I hope that you do well in your next venture. But the thing is, please, vote for this renovation. The children need a good education. That's what Plainville's all about. I hear it all over other towns. They're jealous because Plainville had such a good reputation. Do what you have to do. Do the right thing for the children and not for your political ambition.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak that has not done so? Anyone else that has not spoken? Yes?
Hi, Melissa Sweeney, 40 Glenwood Drive. I've spoken a couple of times already, and I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. I was planning on listening. Every time I come, I hear our residents trying to have you listen, like rational thought, emotional thought, like they're, we're trying to reach you, and you're not listening. I don't understand why you're here if you're doing everything you can to prevent us from voting. We have been trying. We've been showing up. It is time to listen to your voters. We are watching. We are never more engaged than right now. This is an opportunity to show us that you actually care, because alls we see right now is your agenda. And I'm asking to stand up and do what you know is right. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so?
Good evening. I didn't have anything prepared, but my name is Megan Geary-Strank. You may have read my letter, letter to the editor.
Did you? I'm sorry. Did you provide your name and address? I didn't hear it.
Megan Geary-Strank, 32 Webster Street.
Thank you.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay.
That's better.
So not being really prepared, but just wanted to share that, I'm a little nervous. My, lately, I've been talking to my children, who are too young to understand, that their superintendent is leaving, and we've stayed in this town for their education, and they're wondering why I want to pull them to do homeschooling or move to a different district. The fact that we chose to live in this town for this long, even considering retiring here and now having to have this, I never expected to be dealing with this. I've worked in schools as a social worker, from West Hartford to Bridgeport to Ansonia, and now I'm in Collinsville in that area. I work with every single district, just about in this entire state. And this whole time, I'm embarrassed, and I will admit that I have not been paying attention to the politics in this town, because I have been so naive in thinking that this is the safest, best little town. And I bragged to other people in this entire state about how wonderful our Board of Education is and how great the education is. I love our teachers. I want to thank everybody, everybody that works in our schools. And I also want to thank you guys for listening. I know this has been very difficult for everyone involved, so I do want to also say thank you for listening, and thank you for being at our meetings, and thank you for being a team player on this. I think we've gotten our message across, and I really hope that we have the best results from what we've all been saying. And thank you, parents.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Anybody else? John?
John Kisslick, 65 Forestville Avenue. Happy May Day, Workday.
Thanks.
You know, I'm going to be all alone again because of my experience as a member of Capitol Building, Capitol Progress Building Committees, like I've explained to you, with all the waste. And I want to say, I was wrong one, once, several months ago. I suggested that you send us to referendum. I was wrong. Because what we have here now is we have these special interests, just this 700 people that aren't representing the 17,000 people in this town, and-- And a word, I'm afraid the word is not going to get out to the reasonable people. They have some common sense that you do not spend $60 million to renovate a middle school. And I understand Councilman Roserco and Moranti in your history, and Councilman Underwood, who's a friend of mine, and I appreciate his backing. We go back to almost 40 years ago when we were both candidates on the same slate, running for council, and the middle school was being discussed to be built. And I and several other people didn't want it built where it was built because it was a town park and playground. That's long gone. Last meeting, I was embarrassed and insulted to sit here and have to listen to several people here supposedly representing academia or whatever they think they are to swear, use foul language, called the council stupid and ignorant. And there was a young girl here who got up to speak, and this young girl is seeing what these people, supposedly educated people, are showing a young student that kind of language to their elected representatives, calling them stupid. How disgusting. To me, that makes me want to double down. And I'm asking you four, don't give up. Try to convince these other three that it's wrong to waste $60 million on a renovation project. Now, a couple of other things. One of them said you did not receive a mandate. You ask these people to keep quiet? It's a waste of my time. Give me a few extra now.
Please respect the speaker. We have done, we have been quiet for everybody that has come up, and I truly appreciate your consideration. And please, do not do that. We did not do that when you got up to speak, so please, respect. Thank you. Go ahead, John.
Now, one person said you did not have a mandate. Well, I have a helper, Noah Webster. His dictionary that I use, it says 2,661 pages. What a mandate is, the authorization to act or approval given by a constituency who its elected representative of the people. Now, keep this in mind, the authorization to act. Okay, you go to our Town Charter, Chapter 3, Section 1, Town Council Powers. The governing body of the town shall be the Town Council, which shall exercise and perform all the rights, powers, duties, and obligations to the town except as assigned to others. Now, you're in charge of all our money. That is a mandate you've been given by being elected, and it doesn't matter if you're elected by one vote or 1,000 votes. Your term, your authority is absolute. It's not diminished by more votes or less.
Okay, John, your time is expired, so I'm going to ask you to wrap up.
I'll wrap up. One other thing. Councilman Rocco was picked out by several, several of these people last meeting. And I want to say, I wish that your work session was taped so we could see it again. Councilman Rocco, to me, is the most intelligent person I've ever seen talk about, about this issue. He is a valuable asset to the town of Plainville. And if he runs for office again, you have my vote. Thank you. Now, you can applaud for me.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Anka Berens Cook, 55 Redstone Hill in Plainville. I've already spoken numerous times, and I really don't have anything new to say. I know, seeing all these new faces here and people that really care about this as well. I just, I had heard some talking about the petition, so I just wanted to clarify a few things. So it does say in the petition, all Plainville residents deserve a chance to vote on MSP's Renovate Like New. Four Plainville Town Council members are currently blocking Mr. Lepage from submitting the application for the Renew Like New grant. I'll just read it in case for anyone who hasn't heard it. This is a no-brainer. If we do this project as a Renovate Like New, we can apply for a grant that will cover more than $36 million. If we don't take advantage of this grant, we do it piecemeal, we'll foot 100% of these costs. We must act now. We deserve the chance to vote on this. The Plainville community should have the right to vote on the Plainville Community Schools. To me, it's an absolute no-brainer. At the bottom, it says, "Plainville residents should have the chance to vote," and that's who signed this. So no, I didn't print the names with "Plainville" written 740 times to save my ink, but if you need it that way, I will do it. But those people that signed are Plainville residents. There may be a dupe or two between the handwritten ones and the signed online ones, but if there's any questions, you can ask me later about them. I handed them over.
Just to be clear, this is the online petition. I don't think we've got, we've got a petition, but, oh, all right, so that's it.
You do.
And as an online survey, anybody can sign that? Anybody that is out on social media or the internet, anybody can sign it, correct?
Correct.
And was that, was that address Plainville? Was that the default on that form?
No. In fact, it shows Bristol, if someone happened to be in Bristol when they filled it out. But people that I know are in our town.
Okay.
So they can't, yeah.
Thank you.
So my final thing is just, just do the right thing. This is just, it's actually infuriating that we are here having to ask for this from you. None of us can understand it, as you can hear, and we get very emotional because we're talking about our kids and our town. Just do the right thing.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Lepage.
Anybody else wish to speak that has not done so?
Lou Frangos, 10 Fairbank Street. I'll start off by saying, the closing, when this person started, the closing of the middle school was a shocker to parents, and I could understand the concerns for the middle school. I understand that part of it. What I'd like, some of the thoughts that went through my mind was, what brought this up in the first place? The decision, that the possible decision of closing? Is there a decrease in students? Or what else is involved? What brought this, was the immediate, what was the immediate? And what I'm talking to is, when this decision, this thought of closing the middle school, there had to be a group of people that were discussing this, and that's who I'm addressing this to. I am sure no, our Town Council didn't all of a sudden, when they say, "We're going to close the middle school." There had to be decisions being made here somewhere. What brought it up? What was your immediate thoughts and alternatives by the people in that meeting? I'm assuming there was a meeting.
I wasn't invited to that meeting.
I'm not asking who was there and who wasn't there.
You were at the middle school forum when it was brought up.
In all due respect, this is a very serious-
You were there.
...
This is about closing schools.
Mr. Frangos, if I can just-
What is the purpose of changing-
Can I interrupt you for just a minute?
Yes, ma'am.
And we'll give him some time. The Town Council, and not everybody is in agreement on this, and this is still in discussion phase, suggested that a study be done, not for the purpose of closing the middle school, but to look at all of our schools and understand the future of Plainville schools. The middle school, because it is eligible for its Renovate Like New at 30 years, this is the time you would do something like this. Once the Renovate Like New has occurred, you cannot do this again, because once you commit to take state funding, you have to stay with that program. So you couldn't back off of it once it went through. This is the timing to try to understand and get some expert outside opinion about our school system, about our enrollments, and about where we're going for the next 10 or 15 years, to the best possible outcome that we could. Nobody has a, you know, a glass ball that we can look into and say, "We know for sure." But there are people that look at birth rates projections and things of that nature, and that could look at that school and understand it far better than we can. That was what it was. We are not saying the school should close. We are asking to get information about the entire system. So I'll put you back.
Okay. Well, that's kind of changed things a little bit, the way I've been hearing. But anyway, that's another story. Okay. One of the suggestions is, if you could have a presentation, what I'm looking for is, perhaps you could have a meeting, a separate Town Council meeting. And I, I'm sorry, I just drifted off into La La Land.
Meeting about the-
I think I'm lost. I'm lost. I'm drifting all over the place.
Okay.
A non-aggressive presentation to keep, oh, okay. A presentation, a separate presentation, a chart of the decision, how the, how the, forget it. Oh, well, and I'm assuming, I asked this question before. There are going to be future public hearings.
Sure.
Regarding the subject.
Of course.
And if I understand this, you're not looking specifically at the middle school, you're looking at all schools?
Right.
There's some people here, I don't know why they're here.
Well, you know, information can be, you know, distributed in a variety of ways, and people interpret information in a variety of ways, so I can't answer to what people think. Does anybody else wish to speak before we close our public comment section? Anybody else wish to speak? Okay. And you'll be our last speaker? Thank you.
Good evening. I had no intention of speaking, but I, I, it is-
Name an address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
You don't know who I am? No, I'm just kidding.
Oh, no. I know, I know.
You don't know me. I'm just kidding. Dana Snell, I live at 18 Newton Avenue. And I, and I, I think that the most important asset we have in the community is our children, and that we have to invest in our children, and we have to continue to, to recognize that sometimes that we make decisions that sound and feel like they're good at some point, and we have to look at the evidence. It is, it is really sad that Mr. Lepage is leaving, but I applaud him for plowing through as long as he can, because he's been a subject of some of the most ridiculousness I have ever seen in my natural life. I live in Plainville. I grew up in Plainville. I'm a fourth-generation Plainville person, and I hear when I'm in other places, "Don't go to Plainville, it's not so good." And I'm like, "That's not what I experienced in the past." And so I think you need to listen to that. I'm not sure if you, if I understand this correctly, you can apply for a grant, get approved for a grant, and choose not to take that grant. But if you don't apply for the grant, you can't get the grant, you can't decide not to take the grant. You have a quality person here with the capacity to write a grant. I write grants. Anybody write grants in here? It is not easy. If, and he's leaving. That's a fact. Let him write the grant. If you want to do research, do it simultaneously. Fix the school. There's mold in the school. There's going to be class of 2097, 2020, 97, by the time you fix it, figure it out, move kids, and find out that's not a good idea. I apologize if I seem sarcastic. I'm not. But it, I mean, I just, like, sometimes you just got to put the brakes on and say, "You know what? Maybe that's not a good idea." People have a right to vote. You have, I am not politically, my, my point is not politics, my point is people. Our point is, we have children, we have a legacy, and I want, I ain't got no kids in school no more. I want the children here, I want people, years after years after years, to have the same experience that I had in success. I appreciate your time. I appreciate everyone who came out here today. I, I beg that you be reasonable and make a decision to get somebody that could write a grant before he leaves. Thank you. Amen.
Thank you.
I'm a little nervous. Andrea Erickson, 52 Metacomet Road. My husband spoke earlier, and I actually wasn't going to say anything at all. But one of the reasons I came tonight was to observe, listen, absorb. It's a lot of what I do, and I have to be honest with you that I have watched everyone's behavior in this room, and I can say that the three people sitting here have been attentive the entire time to people who are speaking and talking to you. I've watched people doodle the entire time. I've heard people speak in the back the entire time, and you've said nothing about it, but when we cheer or feel something good, you tell people to quiet down. You interrupted that gentleman as he was saying things as well, and he didn't even get to say what he was going to say, whether I agree with it or not, he has that right. And you interrupted him.
I did.
Yes, and so-
Was it because of the applause?
No, ma'am, it was not. You interrupted him, and he lost his train of thought. But anyway, that's just aside, it's okay. Actually, you're doing it right now, and I'm not trying to be confrontational. In fact, I'm probably, anyone who knows me is the least confrontational person that you'll meet. What I can say is that I am completely blown away and appalled by what I'm seeing here this evening. I also know that I have three kids, twins in the middle school and a high schooler. I'm just going to say, and I know everybody is echoing, and I know Mr. Lepage is not sitting here tonight because he wants to hear people talk about how sad they are that he's leaving, but it is the truth. Because this man has gone way above and beyond for anything that is expected of a superintendent, never mind a man. So I will say this, is that when you sit here and you talk about you want someone who's qualified, that knows the schools, knows all of these things, you're looking at him right here. He is employed, he is our superintendent, that is what he does. We should all stick to what it is that we do and what we know, and not try to assume that you guys could bring somebody better in that could tell us what he has been telling us, what all of the people here are. It's not about insulting. I've heard the insults back there that you have failed to correct. But I will say this, is that I really do hope that you take into consideration not the opinions that serve you, but everybody's opinions, and not doodle when people are talking. Thank you very much.
Actually, I'm taking notes and writing down all the folks that got up to speak, so I have the list. You can see it. All right, I'm going to close public comment. We had several people come tonight, and I do appreciate that you take time out of your family obligations and work obligations to come here and talk to the Town Council. We've had a number of these, and I'm going to close it. We're, we've been going on over an hour. So thank you very much for all of you that came tonight and offered your opinion. We're going to be moving on to the next item of business. We do not have any old business, so we're on to the new business section of our meeting. We have some things to take care of. I have a motion for item number one.
Someone drop their sunglasses. Let's go, Dave.
She was talking about, she was talking about me, Ken. She was talking about me because I doodle like all the time.
How does she know what we're doing up here?
Every meeting, though. Every meeting, it has nothing to, I still-
Who's anybody now?
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to approve the 2023 Neighborhood Assistance Act proposal for the Prudence Crandall Center, Inc., annual appeal in the amount of $150,000.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, motion to approve Part B, the 2023 Neighborhood Assistance Act proposal for the Chrysalis Center, Inc., St. Phillips House Energy Conservation Project in the amount of $68,040.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number two, please.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to adopt the proposed amendment to General Code, Chapter 335, Taxation, Article 12, Provisions of the Collection Revenue Regarding Waivers of Nominal Taxes.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number three.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to adopt the proposed amendment to General Code, Chapter 335, Taxation, Article 12, Provisions of the Collection Revenue Regarding Refund of Nominal Balances. Second.
Sorry. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam Chair.
Number four. Go ahead.
Motion to establish a public hearing on Monday, May 15, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the municipal center to hear public comment on an additional appropriation for capital projects.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number five.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to waive the conflict of interest for the Board of Education to obtain a legal opinion regarding the closure of consolidation of a public, of Plainville schools.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Madam Chair.
Yes?
Some discussion. Just want to point out that this is an important motion. You know, I, some of the ideas that have been proposed, and I certainly question on many levels, but one very basic one was, whose authority is it to make a decision regarding the closing of schools? And I really question whether, was even the Town Council's authority to, to get into that? And I'm certainly not attorney, and that's something that I can give the final word in, but this is an important motion, because we will receive the clarification on that matter.
Anything else from anybody? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number six.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to approve the tax refund as listed on the-
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion?